Here.
Nortonhoff, Paff.
Here.
Dezak, Ware.
Here.
Present, we do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's take allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held back on March 6th. I saw one very minor typo on the next to the last page. Kind of smack dab in the middle of the page where it starts out what Mr. Sula asked if there's any, I think discussion, discuss is supposed to be discussion. Does anybody else have any comments or changes?
Move to approve as amended.
Motion by Mr. Nortonhoff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Paff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a final plat of re-subdivision request by Gurnee Retail Partners Keystone. Who has this one?
Yes. Eric Peterson of Keystone Ventures on behalf of Gurnee Retail Partners LLC is seeking a sub, the resubdivision of property located at the northeast corner of Grand Avenue and Hutchins Road. The subject property consists of approximately 11.25 acres and is zoned C2 community commercial. The resubdivision divides the development parcel into four separate lots to accommodate the future development of two new restaurants, a retail or service, and a medical office. All public improvements associated with the Keystone development are currently in place or will be installed with the site improvement. The subdivision plat reflects adequate easement provisions. Staff has reviewed the subdivision plat and verified that it conforms to village ordinances. Engineering staff recommends that the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board forward a favorable recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees for the subdivision. The applicant is in attendance to answer any questions the PCB may have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
My only one question was ingress and egress from the property. It wa, I didn't see that noted on here, not that it needs to be noted on there, but.
It's tricky.
Cross access set up through the property, but where do we have our ingress and egress points?
Good evening and thanks for letting me appear tonight. My name's Tim Hague. I work with Eric Peterson from Gurnee Retail Partners in Keystone. So what we're, what we're going to propose and what we've covered in the declaration that we reviewed with the staff is there'll be a right in, right out off of Grand Avenue that will land about where Lot 1, Lot 1 is the larger lot on the left side of the screen to the west. Then it proceeds with Lot 2, kind of in the middle there. The right in, right out off of Grand Avenue access point will hit at that dividing line. And then we'll have another curb cut entrance on Bridlewood that'll, that'll continue west through the site to Woodland Terrace. We believe that the retail portion of Lot 2, 3, and 4 development will happen prior to Lot 1. That might be about a year out with the medical office building. We also do anticipate there will be some additional access off of Hutchins when that medical office building is developed.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, if not, a favorable recommendation to the Village Board would be in order.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the final resubdivision of plat for Gurnee Retail Partners LLC for property at 7320 through 7380 Grand Avenue.
Second.
Was that you, Dave? Okay, second by Mr. Nortonhoff. Roll call, please.
Morgan?
Aye.
Nortonhoff?
Aye.
Paff?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's a text amendment out to Article 5.2 related to the C4 Commercial District Dimensional Standards. Audrey.
The Village recently received an inquiry about the setback requirements for residential building in the C4 Village Center District. Article 5.2 Dimensional Standards, which regulates setbacks on residential properties within C4 District, requires a minimum of 30-foot front and corner side yard setbacks and no setback in the interior side rear and transition yards. Not requiring any setbacks in some yards prompted staff to compare the current standards with those of the former zoning code, which found that the 2015 zoning code update did not carry over setback standards for interior side and rear yards into the current code. Having no setbacks from the interior and rear lot lines would allow principal buildings, basically houses here, to be constructed up to the associated property lines, which could result in an insufficient separation between residential buildings and also from adjacent non-residential uses. This can lead to issues such as spreading building fires, preventing airflow, obstructing natural lighting, noise transmission, and blocking the drainage flowway on the site. The former code also required a minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet for detached single-family dwellings and 5,000 square feet for two family dwellings and townhomes in the C4 District. These requirements that historically regulated and established parcels in the C4 Districts are relatively consistent with the minimum lot sizes required by Villages R3 through R6 districts for similar residential uses. Per the current code, all housing types within R3 to R6 districts shall meet at least 10 feet of interior side and 30 feet of rear yard setbacks. Therefore, staff suggests to borrow the missing setback standards from these districts that are comparable in size to residential lots in the C4 District. That concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you. From my perspective, this is kind of correcting an oversight from when we last reviewed the code and I, I don't see any issues with it. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
I agree.
Okay, just for the record, because this is a public hearing, there's nobody here, so I'm not going to open the floor to the public. So then a motion in the favor, in the form of a favorable recommendation to the Village Board would be in order.
Motion to forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of the Village of Gurnee to amend Article 5.2 Dimensional Standards, Table 5-1, Commercial District's Dimensional Standards, to add a 10-foot interior set, side setback and 30-foot rear setback under the C4 District.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paff. Any discussion? We have a roll call, please.
Morgan?
Yes.
Nortonhoff?
Aye.
Paff?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a text amendment to Article 8.2.22, Outdoor Dining Standards.
Tracy.
I have this one. I'm going to give you a little bit of a background on how we've regulated outdoor dining over the years, just so you kind of get a feel for where we're at now and proposing. Prior to the 2015 zoning ordinance update, outdoor dining associated with restaurants was regulated depending upon whether the restaurant had a liquor license or not. Restaurants with a liquor license required a permit. Staff reviewed the permit application to ensure that specific requirements were met, such as the outdoor dining area was accessory to a principal establishment, that the dining area did not encroach to any required setback, that parking standards were met, as well as others. Restaurants with a liquor license were required to go through a special use permit process as well as a permit process to show compliance with the regulations in place that I just mentioned, including some additional that the outdoor dining area cannot exceed 50% of the restaurant size and that we restricted entry into and out of the outdoor dining area through the restaurant. And we required installation of a barrier around the outdoor dining area to prevent the passing of liquor to outside, to patrons outside the dining area. The special use permit was seen as onerous, onerous to restaurant owners because it took on average about three months. Once summer came, you know, by the time they got through the process, summer, the outdoor dining season was over. So when we updated the zoning ordinance in 2015, the process for establishing outdoor dining area accessory to restaurants was streamlined. We basically took restaurants with and without a liquor license and we treated them the same. A permit and a site plan review was required, including a fee that was required to be submitted, but a special use permit was not required. It was only required if, for some reason, the restaurant owner could not meet any of the, any one of the use standards that we had in our code. The use standards that we had in the code in 2015 included that the outdoor dining area cannot interfere with pedestrian access or parking spaces or aisles, that a delineation must be maintained between the public right-of-way, private access drive, or any pedestrian walkway, that the dining area must be on a constructed surface such as paving or wood, and that any lumber used must be fire retardant quality or rot protected, and rot protected. The following additional submittals were required for both site plan review and special, and special use application if that, if one was required. A seating plan, including the surfacing specifications, plan showing how the area will be delineated from the public right-of-way, private access drive, and pedestrian walkway, a refuse disposal plan indicating the type, location, and method of maintenance, storage plan for the furniture during the off-season. We also regulated hours of operation when the outdoor dining area was in proximity to residential. If it was, the outdoor dining area was within 300 feet of a residential area, it was prohibited from being used between the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. If it was more than 300 feet away, then it could only have the restriction between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM on Monday through Friday, and then 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM on Saturday and Sunday. We also had requirements that lighting had to meet code, music was subject to volume control, and that the outdoor dining area had to meet building setbacks. So what happened when the pandemic hit in 2020 was Mirko Vorak issued an executive order coinciding with the National Emergency Declaration. One of the provisions of that order pertained to outdoor seating for restaurants, making it permissible within the village without a permit as long as outdoor dining areas were compliant with the State of Illinois guidelines. The Village's guidelines in effect in 2020 were extended by the Village Board through the end of the 2023 dining season. Under these guidelines, a permit and site plan review were no longer required unless the restaurant proposed a structure that was either heated or was more than 50% enclosed. In that case, a permit was required and the site was inspected, but no fee was charged. Additional guidelines that we implemented during the pandemic included that you could use up to 50% of the parking lot for the dining area, mostly because at that time, a lot of the other businesses were shut, so you could use the parking lot area without causing difficulty for the other businesses. The allowance of outdoor wait stations for liquor and the ability to take liquor and cocktails to go. To date, the Village has not been made aware of any problems created by these guidelines. As such, the Village is looking to codify many, but not all, of these guidelines. We're entering into the 2024 outdoor dining season, so we want to get these on the books so that restaurant owners can start operating under them if possible. The guidelines for allowing 50% of a parking lot to be occupied by an outdoor dining area is not being proposed to be extended, as well as any of the to-go liquor allowances that were proposed during, or implemented during COVID. Provided to you in your packet was the existing outdoor dining area regulations, a redline copy of the proposed amendments, as well as a clean copy of the new proposed ordinance language. A summary of the ordinance is as follows. Basically, we're treating outdoor dining areas, kind of separating them into two classifications. The first one is outdoor dining areas that are in a vehicular drive aisle and/or parking lot area. Now, again, we're not talking 50% of the outdoor, or 50% of the parking lot. If they have excess parking and they can potentially cordon off some of that, they could be able to be used for outdoor dining. To be able to use it, though, we are going to require site plan review approval without a fee and our building department would inspect the outdoor dining area once it's set up. We would also require that the outdoor dining area meet the use standards, many of the use standards that we have in our current code, such as maintaining accessibility for handicapped persons into the building and into the outdoor dining area, all fire and building codes, a requirement for a storage plan during the off-season, a requirement for delineation of the outdoor dining area from traffic and parking areas, seating plan, surface specifications, and alcohol service or operations plan. And then we're proposing that once the plan is approved for this outdoor dining area, they do not need to go through the site plan review or permit every year. It would be, you know, be able to be picked up every season as long as they did not discontinue the outdoor dining area for one year. If it ceases to exist for a year, then they have to come back in for that permit. All outdoor dining, all other outdoor dining areas, those not located in drive aisles or parking lots, would be allowed by right within the limits of the private property without any village review. So that would be no site plan review, no inspection. What we're talking about in, for these types of dining areas would be an area up adjacent to the building on a sidewalk that's in front of the building, that's not a public sidewalk. They would still need to maintain all of the use standards that we have proposed for the other outdoor dining areas that are in the parking lot areas, and then also have to meet all fire, building, handicap accessibility codes. So they would have to maintain access in and out of the building plus the outdoor dining area. The use standards that are in our code or that are being proposed are there to ensure that the outdoor dining areas operate safely, cleanly, and in a manner that does not negatively impact property owners in the area or public health safety welfare. Should the Village become aware that a restaurant owner is violating any of the proposed regulations, the owner would be immediately notified to remedy the violation. Do you have any questions on how we're proposing to go forward with these regulations?
You'd like to start? Go ahead, Evan.
The, in the outdoor dining areas where they're permitted by right, there will be no review of the?
Correct, and that's kind of the way it operated under COVID. The only time that we've required a permit or had any review under COVID was when the outdoor dining area was in a parking lot area, I'm sorry, when it had a structure that was enclosed more than 50%, or it, trying to remember what the other one, or it had a heater. In that case, it required review, but the other outdoor dining areas did not. We operated under those for, since 2020, so for three years to date. I'm not aware of any incidents that we've had. And if we did, which again, I'm not aware of, we would notify the restaurant owner immediately and get those remedied.
So the only way we would find out would be if somebody notified us that they were not compliant?
In that case, yes. Or if somebody from staff was dining and they saw something that obviously was a violation.
Right. My question is why are we not?
I'm sorry?
Why are we not giving them a inspection before?
We're trying to be more business-friendly, trying to streamline the process. Maybe David can speak to this more.
It's just what Tracy said. It's trying to be more business-friendly. The restaurants operated this way successfully, you know, responsibly throughout COVID. We still have oversight. All the same regulations are still in place. It would just be more on a reactive basis than a proactive basis if there were any issues.
But they're, they're still subject to the normal public safety inspections, correct?
Absolutely. No, the fire department is out once or twice a year to all the restaurants. Our building department's out there regularly as well. So yeah, and the, and the Lake County Health Department is out as well. So they're all looking for, you know, public safety issues. And if anything shows up, we have the leverage to have it corrected. But the recent experience has shown that the restaurant owners have been acting responsibly with their outdoor dining, so we wanted to kind of honor that.
So the question would be, I guess, then, if there's no review process, there's no permitting process, how would a restaurant owner, let's say a new restaurant owner or someone who's never had outdoor dining before, completely be aware of what all the use standards are so that we would have assurance that they would at least be aware of them to try to meet them instead of just going, "Why? I didn't know." You know, and how do we know then? Because we don't know that they're doing it because there's no permit or whatever, so.
Right. So if it's a new restaurant, we'll provide the outdoor dining regulations to them when they're getting their, their permit for, you know, occupying their space. If it's someone who has an existing restaurant and decides to do it, you know, if they're doing it responsibly, you know, the, the things that we're asking are not out of, you know, common sense, or outside of the realm of common sense. You know, if they're blocking the pathways, you know, it's, you know, they're going to get complaints. They're, they're blocking exit doors, things like that. We're going to be reviewing that with our fire, fire annual inspections. So it's, it's going to be pretty evident pretty quickly if they're doing something outside of that. Getting that information, we'll start by educating them, getting them the information, and, you know, ask them for compliance. And, you know, like I said, it's going to be a little more reactive than proactive. But for the most part, the, the regulations that we have on the books that are in place are pretty much common sense regulations.
And I just wanted to add that I think our economic development director, Ellen Dean, she's done a good job of letting the restaurant owners know what the regulations are. And when she does that, she usually will send out a flyer that addresses a lot of the requirements, the standards. So I'm sure she would do that with these new regulations. She did that during COVID to make sure that they understood that, you know, they couldn't, you know, have a heater underneath a tent or something like that. She put together a, a kind of a do and don't or a kind of FYI type of thing for the owners.
And had an active mailing list, email mailing list for all the restaurant owners in town and has been keeping that up. Absolutely. Thank you.
Only come out, I'm sorry, they only come out twice a year, right?
Restaurants, I believe, are, they try to get to those twice a year. Other businesses not restaurant-based are once a year. And it has to do mostly with the certification for the hoods and the fire, fire systems in restaurants are a little more intense than what they are in regular office buildings or commercial spaces.
But it's more frequent than I want it done.
Right. But there's, then, then there could be a time period of months where they could be operating outside of the regulations and. I mean, I, I just, I don't quite understand why we're not doing the same. Is there some major delay in inspections if they, they were to require one?
No, in all honesty, we haven't had that many of outdoor dining setups. A handful of them around town, O'Toole's put in a little outdoor dining setup outside their restaurant. I think Stevens has a few tables sitting out front of theirs. You know, they're, they're kind of few and far between. There's not a lot of restaurants taking advantage of it, a lot of them. It just doesn't make sense for them to do it in their locations. So those that can do it and can responsibly throw a couple of tables out and give this option, we just didn't want it to be a big hurdle or a hurdle for them to do that.
And you're saying that we haven't had any issues, nothing's been pointed out to any of the restaurant owners that they were out of compliance or?
Not since COVID went, not since we started COVID and we, you know, loosened things up, loosened things way up. We haven't had any real issues with the implementation of the relaxed standards. Correct, we can, we can still do it. And that's pretty much where we're at right now is, you know, is requiring, you know, a permit and site plan review for all installations. In all honesty, it's a, it's a little overkill for some of them. You know, think about, oh, oh, the ice cream place in front of Gurnee Town Center or something like that. They want to put a table and two chairs out front. So we're going to charge them $150 for a site plan review and, you know, another $100 for a permit, even if we didn't charge it, but it's, it's a little bit of, you know, sledgehammer on a thumbtack.
Just, just two quick questions and or observations. So we're talking about the, the excess parking. So what constitutes excess parking if we're, if they're going to encroach into the parking lot and/or, you know, that right of way? Do we make that determination when we go out to, to site inspect, or do they tell us that they have excess parking?
So we have a lot of plans on, in the village hall regarding commercial development. So we can do a calculation on what the parking requirement is based upon code. And then based upon having the site plan for that property, we can determine whether there's any excess parking above what code requires. And if so, they could potentially utilize those for an outdoor dining area.
So we're making a determination not that?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then just a second one. So on a property, C one, we say, you know, must be located within the limits of the property with a principal dining. So it's not unusual for us to have restaurants in the strip centers. And I'm envisioning that as the dining, outdoor dining portion is within the, the least rights of that tenant, right? So point A to point B. If there, if there's a vacancy on either side of them, are they negotiating with the landlord? Are we permitting them to expand that dining area to take up the excess space that might be not currently used by another tenant, or we restricting them to the least space?
There's a provision in the draft ordinance that would allow them to use outside the frontage of their tenant's space if they have approval from either that tenant or the property owner. So we didn't want to limit it in case there was such a situation where they had a, a neighbor that was, had a big, you know, sidewalk area, and they were receptive to allowing some of that. Or in the instance that you just pointed out where there might be a vacancy on one direction, and it allows them an opportunity, if the landlord lets them, we have provided that ability.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The only other comment that I, that came to mind for me was six o'clock in the morning seems kind of early. But I'm struggling if there aren't any places that are that close to residential areas or that are even open at six o'clock in the morning that would...
Starbucks.
Starbucks.
You know, breakfast places, but mostly it's like a Starbucks or something like that.
Starbucks are usually not near residential areas, though, are they? Not that I can think of any.
Okay, well, we have a Starbucks in Gurnee Town Center. And although it's on the east side of the building, the west side of that building is directly contiguous to residential. So never say never, but that's the reason why it's in there mostly. Most restaurants that are going to have a liquor license or something like that, they're not opening at six o'clock in the morning. It's mostly for breakfast places.
I mean, it, it just struck me as early, but it also, I, I just can't think of a practical place where it causes a conflict. And I just wanted to get it on the table in case someone else thought of a place. All right, once again, there's no one here, so I'm not going to open the floor to the public. So a motion in the form of a favorable recommendation to the village board as amended by Brian's change would be in order. Yes, Dave?
I move that we forward a favorable recommendation on the petition of the village of Gurnee for the amendments to the terms of Article eight point two point two two, outdoor dining standards of the Gurnee zoning ordinance as amended by the village attorney.
A motion, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paff. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Morgan?
Yes.
Nortonoff?
Aye.
Cap?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next meeting on the calendar is the first of May. Are we anticipating anything?
No.
Nope.
No public hearing as of now.
Okay, so we're kind of on call. All right, there's nobody here. A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paff, second by Mr. Nordentoff. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, everyone.